I'll call the December 4th, 2017 City Council Meeting to order. Call of the role.
John Hawkins.
Here.
Matt McKinney.
Here.
Brian Miller.
Here.
Jim Talbot.
Here.
Logan Welch.
Here.
Call for a motion to approve the agenda.
So good.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same song. Pleas believe. Pleas believe in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Section A, Potions, Communications, and Requests. This is the time of the meeting that a citizen may address the council on a matter not on the agenda. Except in cases of emergency, the city may not take, will not take any action at this meeting, but may ask city staff to research the matter or have the matter placed on the agenda for a future meeting. Anyone have anything? A just reminder about the police blue, the Blue Light Uniform Event Shop With A Cop Program. The donations are accepted at the Police Department until December 16th. And then, uh, the December 12th at 6:30 PM, the Hotel Motel Grant applicant's presentations. Uh, and thanks to everyone who took part in the Christmas in the City activities yesterday. Item B is Minutes and Claims. The following items have been deemed to be non-controversial, routine actions, to be approved by the council in a single motion. If a council member or the member of the, of the audience wishes to have an item removed from this list, it will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Uh, we have minutes of November 20th, 2017. Uh, two is a resolution on payroll for the period ending November 25th, and paid on that December 1st, and a resolution on bills and the funds list.
We approve 1, 2, and 3 collectively.
Second one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same song. Motion approved. C is general agenda. Um, first thing on the agenda is an update from Gary Groves, Chairman of the Wilson Brewer Historic Committee. Need a glass of water to start, Gary.
Pardon?
Need a glass of water to start.
Well, do you like Mario Gruocobone, Julio?
No.
No, I think I'm fine. So, um, let me begin by saying that, uh, as you perhaps know, this, I believe, is the fourth appearance that, uh, I, over the past 18 months, actually, that I've appeared before you as chairperson of the Wilson Brewer Park, uh, concerning the proposed plans and, uh, to renovate and preserve Wilson Brewer Park. So additional members who serve on that committee with me are Kim Anderson, Laurie Graham, Jay Talbot, and Lindsay McCormick Welch. Our committee, together with the volunteers who work on the lead committees and the finance and the design committees, uh, believe this may be the appropriate time to bring to you a preliminary proposal and to request the council to approve our committee to move forward with a fundraising effort to raise private and perhaps public funds to enhance the park renovation that is owned by the city. So together with the assistance of Kent Harst, sitting here with his PowerPoint, I think we want to make a little presentation. And I think you want to look at this as, uh, what value does this park give to us as a community? And we'll try to answer that as we move through and try to realize that this park is a, really a pretty important community asset that often is overlooked as to value. So, uh, let's begin, Kent. Is that the first slide? Okay. Let me start by saying that Wilson Brewer Park is really a story of our community in a lot of ways. It encompasses the story of Wilson Brewer, who founded the town in Newcastle back in 1854, a name which was later changed to Webster City, Ottawa. In 1932, the family of Wilson Brewer conveyed a nine acre tract of land to this, out of his homestead there at Wilson Brewer Park. He conveyed that to the city of Webster City in exchange for a promise from the community to forever preserve the land, its buildings and additional buildings that might be added, in the name of Wilson Brewer Park. So the city at that time accepted the proposal and has owned and maintained the park over the past 85 years. But we are confronted today with a reality that we have to face. And that reality is that the Wilson Brewer Park is in pretty dire need of major renovation and preservation. The estimated cost of this project to renovate is pretty substantial. And it, paying for that cost is going to require a fundraising effort to be initiated within our community. We must determine now, all of us, we must determine what value to the present and to the future is there in our past. What value to the present and future lies in our past? So, there's some questions here that I want to raise, and I think these questions are pretty universal among these people we're working with in the committees. And I want to raise them here because they're going to be raised as we endeavor to go through fundraising effort. In determining value, questions are going to be as follows. Is this park of any importance today? Is there any importance to this Wilson Brewer Park for us? Two, are the proposed plans for renovation and preservation worth the cost that's going to be involved? Number three, are the stories of log cabins and one-room schoolhouses in the country and prairie country churches, are they of value to us to renovate and is that justified? Do the stories of criminal trials and civil disputes and legal issues and politics of the 1860s stored within the Hamilton County's first courthouse have any relevance today? Are the railroad stories and the museum exhibits and the numerous items of artifacts that are found within the Illinois Central Railroad Depot, are they worth the effort to keep them up? Last question. Are we the custodians of these stories? Are we the caretaker of this park by virtue, simply by virtue of taking ownership of the land, together with a promise to do so? Now, there's going to be other questions raised, and I'm sure people sitting here, I'm already out of the questions, but I want to focus on these questions and perhaps make some comment and suggestion that may be of assistance, as each of us must struggle to determine whether or not this costs compared to its value. So, let's take the park as to its importance. Well, obviously, this park was important in 1932, or the city would not have taken the land, together with saying, "We're going to take care of it." So if it was important, then we must ask ourselves, why isn't it important today? What's, what's changed? Now, as to whether the proposed plans to renovate and preserve Wilson Brewer Park are worth the cost, it seems evident that before we can even determine value, we have to have some vision of what this park is going to be, or should be. Because just in my limited experience in dealing with values, it's pretty obvious that you've got to have a vision for the park's usage before you can determine whether that usage is any value. So simply, a vision will dictate usage, and the usage of your park will determine its value. So for a moment, I want you to come with me in this area here, and I want you to think in terms of a vision of this park, picture Wilson Brewer Park to be a place of designation, which offers a quiet resting area, set aside a special place within this nice grassy lawn area, where we can perhaps just simply sit, talk with friends, or watch our children or grandchildren play spontaneous game of tag in this grass. Imagine, imagine this park, by looking at this model, this park having seven, eight foot wide sidewalks that encircle the park, with comfortable benches located throughout this area, inner area, together with a new and clean bathroom facility that will be offered to the public for its use during the park hours. Picture the outer core of this park, with two newly renovated cabins that are going to be moved from where they are, moved east and turned so they face the park. This area here, Harmony Center School here, Mulberry Center Church, bathroom, courthouse, and the people, a U-shaped area. That's what's being suggested for your consideration. This prairie church is already being used for weddings. It's being used now, and social events. It's been upgraded for usage, air conditioning, heating, with funds that we had. So that has moved on to completion or near completion for the, for the school. Imagine the depot with a side railing platform on the west side of the depot with an old caboose, railroad caboose, and side railing. Imagine that in your mind as to the attractiveness, that would be maybe for some parents, an attractive nuisance, but it's an attraction that I think this park will find. Within this depot also is going to be, is the Bone Bright Museum. It's a museum for our park. This part, this museum, you have to vision, you have to vision this way. But inside that, inside that Bone Bright Museum will be a visitor-friendly environment and offers professionally presented and changing exhibits that change, they're presented and they change, displaying the history of businesses, the history of organizations, and the history of peoples of this community, as well as the stories of our neighboring communities, where this could be a deposit for that history centrally located in this museum. That gives us a chance to better know who the people and the communities that surround us are, and who they are is important to us, because there's history there as well. This shall be a place where we will return. We're not just going to go there once. We're going to go there once and return. And the next time we go, we're going to bring our family, we're going to bring our friends, and we're going to have a sense of pride, a sense of heritage, and a sense of ownership. This is a vision that can be. Reference to the stories of the log cabins. Reach back with me to the year 1854. Imagine what it would be like in 1854 to live in the mountainous region of western Virginia with family who have been rooted there for centuries, generations more likely. And you're going to pick up with your wife and you being in your 30s, and you're going to take your eight children, ranging from ages 12 to six months, and you're going to board a flatboat so you can get onto the Ohio River and travel westward to the Mississippi, and then change boats and come north to Iowa. And then, once you get there, you hire or buy, you kind of stole the wagon, and you travel to this prairie frontier of Newcastle and try to set up your home. It's hard to imagine what courage that might have taken just to leave home. And imagine the sorrow of the friends and family left behind with the idea that perhaps you never will see each other again. Now, this is just one story of these cabins, and this story, as well as the others, definitely reflect the pioneer spirit of our American heritage that are found within these log cabins. Imagine a school that's out in the country that has one room with eight classes and one teacher. Imagine the children, from eighth grade to first grade, helping each other learn arithmetic and learn math, arithmetic, and reading, and perhaps even penmanship. Think of that community that built these, these schools, as well as the prairie churches that were built in the 1890s. Harmony School represents one of those schools. It was down south of Tunnel Mill, south of the river. And imagine kids who lived on the north side to try to get across to go to school, having to take a boat that somebody rows them over to go to school. Now, that's a story that happened, not to be lost. Smallberry Church is, reeks with history of how a community came together to build a church. The stories of sacrifice and courage and faith, these traits offer and provide value. Stories of the disputes of the 1860s are in this courthouse. First murder trial tried here in 1869 was on the top floor. Other trials were held there for the 10 years before a new courthouse had been built. And all the politics of this day was argued or somewhat found a place where they could discuss politics of the community, as well as the county. This is all found here. When the railroad came through, in a 1869 shooting, imagine how significant its influence was to the community. It connected us to the east and would soon thereafter open westward to California. Think of the impact it had on the travel of people in those days. You no longer had to come by boat and kind of stow away. You could ride in a train. Think of the impact it had on the economic value of this community at that time. There were communities, you know, in this area where the railroad didn't go through. They are now ghost towns. This happened to go through this community, which made it a community. Railroads, the telegraph, the Navy artifacts, and numerous museum, museum exhibits depicting the history of the community are located in the 1901 Illinois Central People. Although each of us may have different views on whether or not we are the entrusted caretakers of our past and custodians of the stories that are found within this nine acre tract of land we call Wilson Brewer Park, it seems quite apparent to me that we did agree to do so in 1932, and it also seems apparent that we should honor that word. Now, as summary, when I first decided to, you know, take my time in this effort, first thing I would ask myself was, is this park, why is this park so important to preserve? All I knew about it, I knew my great, great grandfather had a cabin there, and I've been through the museum several times, but it looked like just a place you'd drive by and look at. For many people, uh, the mention of history causes our eyes to glaze over, but history is more important than just memorizing facts against the past that we have here. History is about us. It's about you and me. We are writing our own history every day. We are writing our own history right here. Someday, our own stories will be a piece of the puzzle that links us to the future To that end, to that end, we have right here in our midst, a living puzzle book in the museum, the cabins, the courthouse, the depot, the church, and the school. A puzzle that as an aggregate tells us a treasured tale of individual lives woven into one magnificent tapestry. This tangible link to the past comes alive through these artifacts, exhibits, through these stories and images, and they must be preserved if we are to continue to learn and grow from history. Now, there's no rote learning of facts and dates in this storybook that we have. Rather, this is a place that has the potential to make history come alive in a unique way for our community. It is a way to appreciate how far we have come since those brave souls gave birth to the community that we know today. Yes, this is like, and I hope you look at it this way, it's like a great American novel. And that novel is right here in our backyard, and it's begging to be told in a meaningful way. So, I hope you can agree when I say that this is a story of value, story of value that cannot be lost. We are beginning a fundraising effort, we're undertaking that officially today, and advising you of that fact. I respectfully ask everyone to consider a contribution in making this history project a reality for ourselves and future generations by simply bringing a new life to a historic So I think at this point, I want to introduce, taking a fundraising effort, we have a foundation that's been formed, formed for some time, called the Wilson Brewer Park Foundation. It's a 501(c) organization, and is able to take tax-deducted, tax-deducted gifts. The committee, Wilson Brewer Park Committee, is suggesting to you for approval that we use Darcy Swan, who was within Engham County, who can take in the gifts and record them for our benefit, and to use those gifts for construction and preservation of this park. So without further ado, I'd like to have, Darcy, if you want to come up here a minute, there's ways of giving gifts, and of course, we're, we feel that it's the time is now because we're just about to the end of the year, we want to give people an opportunity to at least make some offering this year if they choose, but this probably will be a 17, 18, and probably a 19 giving period. So, Darcy.
Thank you. I just want to, um, let you know that we currently have three funds with the Wilson Brewer Park Foundation Group through the Engham Hamilton County Foundation. We have an endowment fund. We also have two non-endowment funds. We can accept gifts of everything from cash to stock transfers to IRA rollovers, gifts of grain, land, and other kinds of assets that someone may have, and we can facilitate that at no charge to both parties. That's one of the benefits to setting up these funds through our foundation. Uh, we are an affiliate partner with the Community Foundation of Greater Des Moines, and right now, I think they have maybe 32, 34 affiliate partners throughout the state, and we're in the top three or four of those affiliate partners. If anyone is interested in making a donation, they can see one of Gary's fundraising committee members, or they may stop down at the Engham Hamilton County Foundation office and talk to me directly. All donations are kept in confidence and private. We also have a spreadsheet, as Gary alluded to, set up, so if someone is wanting to make a donation specific to one park of the, or one part of the preservation project, we can track that and make sure that their donation is being utilized correctly. So, I don't know if there's anything else you want me to state, or...
I appreciate the article you put in the paper Friday.
Yes, yep. We had an editorial put in the paper on Friday talking about the different ways to give, not only to this project, but we also have multiple other projects within the county that were involved with as well, so.
Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Now, I'm sure one of the questions is how much is this whole thing going to cost us? So I think I'm prepared, I think we're finally prepared to start talking about what the projected costs are. I understand that the costs are estimates. All costs and all approvals of any contract has to go through you. You know that, I don't need to tell you. Preach and acquire has to go through you. So, we're proposing to commence with the, the part, the cabins as the first project in this part. And the cabins, together with, it's going to be a three-phase operation. I think later this month, if I'm not mistaken, you'll be looking at the plans for a hearing, a hearing on the bids.
Set a right hearing.
Set a public hearing of the bids. The first phase of the cabins is to put up foundations, which would be east of the current site, higher level, so it's the foundations, concrete foundations that would be placed. The second part of the, of the cabin project would be going out for bids to move the cabins from where they are to the new location. And the third phase of the cabin project will be the chinking and the preservation within, which includes the floors and the, and the roof. which includes the floors and the roof. Now, so you say, what's that going to cost us? Well, it's right around $130,000 to do that. And how are we going to pay for that? Well, I think we're confident to proceed with bids because we do have some funds towards these cabins. There are approximately, let's see if I can get the right one here. Well, I think it's somewhere, is it, can't see. Don't have my paper right here in front of me, of course. But I believe of the 125 or 30,000, we have a pledge from the city of Webster City for 40,000. We have funds from Hotel Motel, 25, 65,000. And we do have funds that have been contributed towards the park, towards the cabins, in the somewhere around 40,000. Those are private funds, that 40,000 being unsolicited funds, which is people that have come forward and had an interest to preserve it. So if you add those up, it's somewhere around 95,000, I believe. So, we're short, but we hope to, once we undertake this project, we hope that the third phase gets underway with the actual working within the park, within the cabins, we should have the funds sufficient. Now, the second project on this park will be the school. No, yeah, it'll be the school. And I think I've got estimates somewhere around 15,000 or 20,000 dollars that will be used to pay for that. Boon Valley Housing has suggested to us that they have funds available and they want the school to be a priority. So I would presume that we will have funds to do the school, and hopefully that'll be next spring. The church would be the third item. And the church, as you know, there's already been some substantial work done, but there's still some more that has to be done. And I believe that's somewhere around $5,000 estimate. The next would be the grounds themselves, grounds, this area here. Now, we envisioned to make this a pretty nice area. Very nice area. But preliminary costs run around 260,000 for that. Including the sidewalks, all that goes with it. The courthouse would be the next one. That's a $75,000 estimated cost, of which we have currently received $15,000 for the Hamilton County Supervisors. And what is it, Ken, another five? Well, 5,000, yeah, 5,000 from the lawyers of Hamilton County, and another 5,000 from a private individual. So there's like 25,000 towards a $75,000 project. The big cost, of course, will be the depot. And that's approximately a $300,000 project. So if I add all those costs up, and those are estimate costs when we did this, it could be a lot more by the time we're done. That's about 830,000. And then, we're going to, also, as we set this fundraising effort up, we're going to propose that donors give to an endowment fund. And the endowment fund would be used to maintain the park. Because we've got to do more than just upgrade it. We've got to find a way that we can preserve it. So, we're going to request that even though the city owns the park, and I'm sure will look to contribute some cost to that, we still need to find additional funds for an endowment to maintain it. So if I add that together, I think we're coming pretty close to a $80,000 project. Any questions?
Was the, is the toilet facility in the 260,000, is that in the, which part would that?
The, that would be this work here.
That part of the grounds?
Sidewalks?
Yeah.
And we're going to have to grade this park up pretty nice. You know, have to do some work on it. And I think the estimated cost that we have is around that figure. Tim Adams this year, if you have any questions on the grounds themselves, he's able to more specifically talk about that if you want him to. But that's in essence where we are, isn't it, Tim?
So you have quite, you have some donors that have donated and said, I only want it to be towards this certain thing.
Yes. And some of those have been the cabins. Some have been the church. We're getting some for the school.
So part of this fundraising, will you just ask for the lump sum, what you need? Or are you looking for that same structure where if you want to donate to this or that again?
I think we're going to set it up that if someone chooses to designate it for a particular project, that can be done, right? Darcy?
Gary, several years ago, there was an article in the newspaper about the Legion Post in Jewel, Iowa, that had gotten a state grant for renovation because it was an old building. Are those funds still available? I don't, you know, I mean, I just remember that. It's been, gosh, I couldn't tell you the number of years ago it was in the paper.
Well, our finance committee has been looking at all kinds of ways of getting money. I don't know specifically if they've looked at that particular item.
Yeah, but I think they got a sizable amount of money down there at Jewel to renovate that Legion. But I'd have to ask somebody from Jewel.
I'd say that we're pretty blessed on having a finance committee made up of people who've been involved with this in the past. It's made up of Dick Anderson, who used to be with the bank. It's made up of Dean Bowden, Bob Erickson, who's sitting over there, Jerida Nelson, and Heidi Tezold, along with me, make up the finance committee. We've been meeting weekly for about, what, two months? Just to try to bring this together and try to identify a donor list, you know, and what we're going to need. Because I think the work begins when we finish our brochure to mail it out and to personal contact people. And we want to try to get the word out this year, so if people want to make a contribution, they can do so. We have the deduction this year. With the stock market going so high, I'm hoping that we can build into people where that market has really gone up and can give a substantial amount. Same with IRAs. If you have an IRA plan, which is always taxable to you, that can be rolled over into this charity, and you get the full deduction of that. Yep. So there's also the endowment fund pays a 5% credit, tax credit.
25%.
25%, that's not too bad.
Not too bad.
Yeah, 25% tax. These, this information will enhance this information. But there's some incentives there for people to give if you believe that this park has value. That's where we start. It's got to have value to people. And this community will determine whether we're successful.
Gary, one question I have is, first of all, thank you for this presentation. It was great. I love it. First off, it sounds like you have a fundraising committee in place. Is there like a necessarily a game plan or a strategy to how you're going to go about this? And the reason I ask is, you listed some of the projects in a certain order. And is that, is that order, I guess, determined on what the board felt?
It's kind of what we thought would be the priority.
Yeah, priority wise, yeah.
You made the priority.
No, correct. But I just want, like, I was wondering if that was intentional to list the priority of maybe the needs more immediate attention compared to other projects. Like, for instance, the cabins, you know, we kind of all had the consensus, the cabins didn't want to see another winter. We were afraid what they might do structurally in the future. So, and the reason I ask, I'm kind of bringing those two things together, the fundraising strategy and the priority of the projects. You fear that maybe somebody's really passionate about the courthouse or really passionate about the depot and maybe wants to wait to donate to them or donate to them, and then we're waiting on donors to maybe find the cabins or the school more relevant. Do you fear any of that happening in the fundraising?
I haven't seen that. I mean, maybe I'm overlooking that.
No, again, I'm just asking. I just didn't know if that was part of your strategy. Because, because again, if there are immediate needs that need met, I personally would want to see this goes met. And the other thing I ask is, this layout that you've brought here today, is this the final layout, the final layout, I guess, suggested from the board presented to us? Or is this still something that we could mark up, move things around a little? When I say that, I mean mostly cost. Say in a year, we have X amount of dollars and we want to do something. Is there fat to cut on this, or is there things that you feel that should be on it either direction?
No, I think we are about to the end of our recommendations here. I think it's coming to you and your board, it's in your part, you know, ultimately speaking, that you have to decide, this is what we think is a vision. And I don't want to lose track of the fact that we've got to have a vision for what this park's going to be. I don't think we can go out and ask for funds if it's not going to be something we envisioned happening. If we have the vision, we're going to do it. And the history of this park in the past, it has been 85 years of history. And there was an effort in the 1960s to put money into the park and build it up, and it didn't go anywhere. There was an effort in 1964, '76, when Midas got involved. A lot of organizations were involved. They put together a tremendous plan, a lot of ideas. But it didn't go anywhere. This time, we can't fail. This time, we better do it, or we never will.
No, I agree, Gary. And we had that discussion a couple of years ago. You know, we wanted to make this a priority, not only for the community, but for the city council, you know. And that's why we reorganized the board a little, we added some members to give you and your board the, I guess, the man and woman power to get this job done, so.
And that was a big help.
Yeah. And to answer your first six questions, yes to all of them. You know, I personally enjoy that park and I look forward to it becoming something that's envisioned. Hopefully, we have the funds both internally and privately to make it happen.
Well, it's pretty obvious to our park committee members that this is going farther along than it has because you folks have supported it. If we didn't have the council's support, I think we'd just be shouting into the wind. All we'd have is a bunch of ideas and nowhere to go. But by you picking up the ball and moving on it, which I must add, I guess we promised to do that, it has helped us and it's given us incentive to try to bring it to this point, to present to you as an idea that you can take and mark it up and do whatever you want. As you'll do more after you get a control of it.
Well, that's a great segue, Gary. So, I'll turn to Daniel. So now, with this information, what are some next steps that we can help the Wilson Brewer Committee or ourselves move this forward?
In terms of the city continuing to help them, I mean, it sounds like...
Well, they are a city board.
Right. So they're still, for one, they're working through their process of designing, finalizing the designs for each of the components and the phases. And so, up until that part, you know, they're going to have to figure out what phases they would like to see done at that time period and start looking at what the construction aspects are going to entail. The construction piece of this is going to be a little interesting. We've talked about how with both some private funds and some public funds, whether the construction, laws that apply to public construction and bids apply in this case. We've kind of looked at the project and because of its complexity and the multi-phases, I think what we've determined that it'd probably be best to follow the state's guideline for what stipulates for construction of public projects. But beyond that, I think it's just going to be a matter of developing those phases and being able to move forward with the construction aspects and moving forward with getting the bids out for a contractor to be able to bid on that.
And we're, sorry, I can't, I'm just looking for you there in the crowd. It sounds like next council meeting, we're doing a request for proposal, a request for...
To set the public hearing. That would be for the foundation portion of the log, moving the log cabins. But that wouldn't occur till spring, but this would just be setting the public hearing.
Gary, I have a question. Is the parking area going to stay about the same? You're not changing the size or shape of that?
Well, I think we have a agreement from the county. It says that the public area here, this is the county park, county parking lot, where they have the old toilet plenty. We use this anytime we want during the weekend. During the week, I'm not sure how many events will be there, but we have the use of this. I think this may be, you guys can see it here. I think this proposed parking area here may or may not be expanded, extended at all. Other than the park around the street. The other thing I forgot to mention, from the standpoint of vision and how it's going to look from the street, we have these telephons, these light poles. You hear the two-tenth block, the full beauty of the depot and the park. So I hope that in your plans somewhere down the line, we have a program to put underground those lines. So that it opens up back to the west, more open space. Put a sidewalk to the west. Hopefully have a caboose, a training area. And we'll enter in from the west, because there will be a side siding, railroad siding there. The west door is pretty level with the ground already. But with the siding, it'll elevate it up gradually to a point where you can walk into the depot without... Right now, we just can't do it from the east, too many steps.
County, another point to that is, the county and the Department of Human Services building has been very gracious to let us use their parking lot a lot in the weekends for activities. And just based on the drawing, it looks like there is some paved walkways to that. Where previous, you know, you kind of had to trudge through the grass and muddles. That may help as well.
I would put a good word in for the board's supervisors. Often we get, being city attorney over those many years, often get in a conflict who they've been nothing but encouraging us to proceed, putting money where they talk about things, willing to do this parking area here in agreement. They have said to come back next year, next fiscal year. Perhaps they'll give us some money. We're promising that. But it's encouraging to know that they're on board with this project. Of course, they're designating their money to the courthouse, which is somewhat understandable. But I appreciate the cooperation of the board.
I have two questions actually. Who's going to move the cabins?
Well, it'll have to go out for this.
Somebody that knows how to move old cabins.
I would think they better know how to move. Or have insurance.
And the second thing is, for the parking, now, my son lives right at the corner of Ohio and Union. Now, anytime that there's anything big down there, those people on Union and River End, that stretch of Ohio, don't like it very much because the traffic is horrendous. And there's not enough parking. So is there going to be any additional parking besides Bliss's parking lot and that little bitty one out front on Ohio incorporated into the southeast?
Well...
You know where I'm at.
Trying to answer your question. I think this may well be extended. I don't know. But I think we're going to eliminate this road that comes back in here where people sometimes park. And I believe parking will be here and then the street. I think they'll be parking on the street on both sides, so that doesn't help your son.
No, and it's, okay, when you said you're going to eliminate that road, now it makes me think of another question. For people to get to the courthouse, to the church, that are handicapped, that maybe have difficulty walking, now you've taken a pathway away from them by vehicle to get closer to those places. You've got them on the sidewalk. You're not making anything very handicap accessible for people to walk from Ohio parking lot.
Here?
Yes.
Well, it will be paved.
Well, the distance.
It'll get on, it'll get onto it.
It will all be handicap accessible, but by the time it's all done.
Okay, that's not what I mean. People that maybe can't walk that far that would like a parking lot closer to the buildings. If you're taking out that road.
But like Logan said, that county parking lot, paved sidewalks to it, that'd be closer.
Off of Bliss?
Yeah, right here, here. See this?
Okay, well.
Right here. This is where the proposed bathrooms are here. Because we'll have bathrooms now that are handicapped accessible.
If it's on the weekend.
Yeah, if it's on the weekend. I don't envision, you never know how this park may go. But you never know if that happens. It'd be nice to have a lot of things going all the time. We may have to look at some other... That is, I know that doesn't quite answer your question, but we're working on it, working on it. We understand it.
Can I comment to that?
You sure may.
The, there's very few opportunities where there's going to be that masses, that many cars parked. Junkfest doesn't take place there. So, you're not looking at huge gatherings of concert-type venues. You're talking about, because we went through pretty great discussion about how much additional parking you need. And quite frankly, the use... And quite frankly, the user groups that are, that have been talked about, you're not going to have two or three hundred cars every one time. So, if you're worried about congested traffic, the venue is not going to have that many people coming. You're not going to have on a daily basis that. It's the Kmart parking lot syndrome. You don't need four thousand stalls every day.
Jim, did you have some comments? Senior here. That makes sense.
Well, I'm primarily here to listen.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your offer to donate some money towards the school from Boone Valley Housing. That's greatly appreciated.
Yeah, I guess maybe, Bob Erickson and I are both on board.
Yes, right.
We're former business partners too, but that's beside the point. I've been retired a long time.
You're still speaking.
Oh, yeah, we're good friends, always have been. Yeah, Boone Valley Housing, for those of you who may not understand what it is, in the early seventies, there was a group of local people bought, put in twenty-five dollars to seed money for loans to build elderly housing on the west side of town. We had seventy-six units out there at one time. We did sell those in two thousand nine because of government regulations, et cetera, et cetera. And I've been on the board personally since eighty-four, and I'm the oldest surviving member currently. But anyway, we dissolved, or we're resolving this year, let's put it that way. And through the years since two thousand nine, we've been giving money away, we've given to senior citizens, Meals on Wheels, Congress, we've given to all different groups. And because of former members who I have known on the board, who went to rural schools, who are now deceased and gone, in my mind, and I think Bob agrees, and Claudia Van Dyst is also on the board, that we agree that we would like to see the school preserved. Sure. That's our goal. And we are willing to fund it. I guess to a point, if it's going to cost fifty-some thousand dollars is one figure I saw, we're not going to fund that much, but we are willing to fund a reasonable amount to bring it up to the standards that we think it should be. And so, that would be accessible to people. And I did take a tour of it several weeks ago. I've been around it, I go by there three, four times, on and off the Boone River Trail, I've walked around it, but I did have the opportunity to go into it. Ken Harsh was there, Councilman Welch was there, she was there from the committee, and I got a personal look at it and a personal idea of what it really needs to have done. So, as I understand it, I was unable to attend the last meeting, because I understand on the nineteenth, we're going to have some pretty good figures on what the committee recommended and what those costs are going to be.
Well, you've seen some costs that are high.
Right.
And just the cost that you see, you don't have money even to cover that, that's a pretty high cost. But the realistic figure is, what I told you before, is probably in the area between fifteen and twenty thousand. But be mindful of the fact that whatever we recommend, it's this council that's going to make the ultimate decision. And those decisions will probably be made next year when they go on for the bids and specs. We just have presented the needs of the school, and what we envisioned needs to be done, and Schofeld and Peterson Engineering, or Peterson Construction kind of gave us some starting figures. So, whatever we, the figure from Schofeld is fifty thousand dollars, and obviously, that's more than we ever even considered. But we're not needing some of the things that they, like temperature control, climate control stuff. I don't think we're looking at that, at least our committee isn't, doesn't need the council when it gets to them. But you're kind of under the gun, are you not, from what you've told me before, is that you have to get those funds into a tax-exempt organization?
We are done December thirty-first, and we have approximately forty thousand dollars that, I'm the treasurer, I've got the checkbook, and I have to get rid of it.
That's right, and you have to get rid of this thing.
So what we'd like to see is, is we would like to have an idea as to, several weeks ago, when I toured, I got a real eye-opening as to what that school needs that may or may not have already been talked about. And Lori Graham was there, and she made some good suggestions from that committee, and I guess at this point, being we're not going to have any hard and fast things, I personally, and I don't know how Bob or Claudia feel about it, but I personally am going to recommend writing a check for X number of dollars that we feel will cover what we feel needs to be done.
Okay.
And that includes possibly some lighting, which would include running electricity to it, possibly handicapped accessibility, and of course, the siding is bad, we don't know if we can save it by scraping, painting, there's some question about that. So, in the long run, as you say, it could easily be in that figure you're talking about. But we are prepared, at least I am personally, prepared to pay it from Boone Valley.
The point I was trying to get at is the fact that you're under the gun for December thirty-first, you've got to move your money.
Right.
And the suggestion I might make for you to consider with your other people, is make that donation to enhance Hamilton County, and put on there your directions as where you want that money to be used.
Right.
So that's what I think, because we aren't going to be quite there by December thirty-first, I don't think, specifically with the figures.
We understand that, we understand that, and there's probably going to be more money, and the committee has not even discussed where the other funds are going to go yet. You know, the school is our priority at this point. Past that, we don't know. It hasn't been discussed yet. We're going to have a board meeting coming up later this month, and that's when the final vote will be taken, and I'll get the direction I need to do what I need to do. And we're going to be meeting with you, Claudia's gone this week, and Bob, but we're going to be meeting with you and discuss how we can do this. How we can designate those funds.
That's right, and I think that's between the two of you to work that out.
And Bob and Claudia, there's three of us that are probably going to be involved in it, the way it looks now.
What we would hope is that the money you designate for the school, if it doesn't exhaust all the funds you have, that you would then dictate or kind of designate where those funds would go into the park.
Right. The excess that, above what we designate for the school, that's what we're planning on doing, yes.
Thank you, Gary.
You're welcome.
Okay, item two is update report from our Chamber Executive Director, Lyndon Christensen.
Hi, Lyndon.
Hi, Gary.
Please, Tim.
Well, we've had a busy fall down at the Chamber. We've hosted a number of events throughout the fall, and we're right now in the midst of the holiday season. In October, we celebrated Manufacturing Day along with Seneca Foundry and Mary Anne's Specialty Foods. Mary Anne's hosted a job fair and an open house, and Seneca Foundry hosted the Iowa Central Community College Career Academy, had an open house and a facility tour that was very well-attended. A committee has been formed to further develop Manufacturing Day in two thousand eighteen to encompass promotion of all industries in Webster City. On October nineteenth, Ladies Night Out was held with a lot of fun, great food, and fantastic deals from our local restaurants and retailers. A number of great prizes were offered by participating businesses, and the turnout was as good as the weather. We were excited to help celebrate the opening of the Lions Club Park with a ribbon cutting. And we also celebrated two successful businesses in Webster City. Salon Maraki, owned by Tina Poland, featured the changes to the salon with a ribbon cutting and open house. And US Cellular celebrated their business by hosting a ribbon cutting. In November, our education committee, headed up by Darcy Swan, put together a seminar entitled Iowa Fraud Fighters. The seminar, sponsored by First State Bank, brought representatives from Iowa, from the Iowa Insurance Division and the Office of the Iowa Attorney General to Webster City, and they shared information on common scams and tools and tips to prevent and report fraud. We have a very good attendance for that seminar. We've been working with the Webster City merchants to promote holiday open houses and Small Business Saturday in an effort to instill a culture of shopping locally first this holiday season. December kicked off with Big Bang yesterday with our annual Christmas in the City celebration. Participating businesses were open, and the Boy Scout Troop Seventeen welcomed shoppers to downtown businesses by opening doors. The middle school choir swirled around downtown singing Christmas carols, and Santa and Mrs. Claus listened to wish lists of area children at the Webster Theater. Families had the opportunity to decorate Christmas cookies and drink cocoa at the Chamber office, thanks to Hyveon Fairway, and the evening was topped off with the first of hopefully many light parades. It was a beautiful day, and we would like to thank everyone who came out to celebrate our hometown Webster City holiday. We'd like to invite everyone to our final quarterly Chamber Coffee for two thousand seventeen, this Thursday, December seventh, at the Hamilton County Extension Office, beginning at seven thirty, eight AM. The extension is celebrating a hundred years of working to provide research-based learning opportunities in Hamilton County. Also, the Chamber has a special announcement, so don't miss out on this one. Chamber members and those wishing to join the Chamber are invited to attend the Chamber Annual Dinner. We're kicking off our hundred and first year of serving the Webster City business community, and hope you can join us on January twenty-ninth. Information on everything I have mentioned can be found on our website at visitwebstercityiowa.com, or even everyone can give us a call at the Chamber office. You can also find us on Facebook and Twitter for current updates. And we'd like to extend an invitation for folks to become involved with the community and the Chamber as we work hard to promote our hometown. We have some fun activities planned for two thousand eighteen, including our fifth annual Junk Fest, and we need your help. No matter your age, or if you only have an hour a day, or a week, or a month, we can find a place that you can be of help. So in closing, I want to thank the City of Webster City for your continued support of everything we do. We could definitely not do it without you. Does anybody have any questions?
Great job last night.
Thank you.
That was a great turnout. And also, we told Gary, I forgot to tell you, you have an hour to fill.
Well, I'm pretty long-winded, but not tonight. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Lyndon. Item three is recommend approval for issuance of a beer and liquor licenses by the Iowa Department of Commerce for the following: five-day Class A liquor license for Webster City Area Development and Chamber of Commerce for six twenty-eight Second Street for annual dinner to be held on January twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, St. Thomas Church for a thousand and eight Des Moines Street. And B is renewal of a Class C liquor license and catering privilege for Second Street Emporium at six fifteen Second Street. Will to approve.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion approved. Item four is the first reading of a proposed ordinance, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances for the City of Webster City, Iowa, of nineteen ninety-six, by amending paragraphs one, two, three, five, and six, chapter sixty-nine, section zero-nine, pertaining to all-night parking prohibited. Get one stack of them up. Turn it up. I think he did. I bet we burnt it out, ran too long.
Was that a dig?
We did. Oh, we missed a light, didn't we? I can hear it.
Yeah, it's on, it's on.
Sorry, I forgot to tell Kent that I was going to need that back.
Siding electricity for the city, that's fine, Kent.
So, this ordinance pertains to the cities owned, the parking lots that the city owns, and there are several throughout the downtown, between Second Street, or between First Street and the railroad tracks primarily. They're typically behind the businesses on Second Street, which is the one behind City Hall, the ones behind most of the blocks on northern side of Second Street, behind just True Valley, or the theater, things of that sort. So this ordinance pertains to one looking to clarify and make clear the ordinance as to what the parking regulations would be. We found as we kind of started going through this, that some of the signage wasn't matching up with what the ordinance had said, and some of the ordinance wasn't matching up to what the needs are today, and so, if this thing will come up, or I can kind of give you a map of...
While we're waiting for that, I have a question. Why is it a problem to have overnight parking in all those spots?
Why is it a problem?
To have overnight parking everywhere, you mean?
Well, the what, you're going to shut them down, you're going to prohibit all-night parking, why is it a problem to have all that?
We're actually opening up.
No, it's actually opening up.
It says prohibit, but with exception of...
Pertaining to all-night parking prohibited.
Right, before it was prohibited altogether. So we're actually excluding some areas to allow overnight parking.
I thought there was a row or something closest to the railroad tracks.
The very north row was the only place you could park.
With all night, yeah.
Everywhere else was banned.
So we're trying to clarify where the areas where overnight parking is permitted, and we're going to do that in combination with signage, as well as by a code according to striping, when we get to that.
It's the attorney's wording of the poem, is the poem, so.
I didn't write this, don't blame me, I didn't write this.
You're getting one.
It's lethal junk, by the way.
So, for instance, this is the four-hundred block of Bank Street by our fire department. And so, we have a couple stalls, this area here, you have a couple stalls on the south end by this grassy area, you have a couple stalls on the north end by the alley, those will be spelled out to be limited for fire department parking only. You have this row of stalls that's still within the fire department lot, these stalls would be permitted to be done for overnight parking. The parking stalls on the east side of Seneca Street, and right in front of the saloon, those will be designated as no parking from two AM to six AM. A part of the reason why we've kind of left that at the two AM to six AM, in part, was to accommodate business, as well as to accommodate in the winter months, the storm removal operations in those areas of town.
So if you know you're going to have a long night at the saloon, you got to park in the red.
It's orange. You said it, not me.
It retains to all these locations in a way, and the good news is, our next school meeting, I won't put it up on the little dot thingy we vote on every year, because this has been an issue I thought was kind of ridiculous for four years, by no fault anybody, that we're just addressing it today, but I'm glad we're getting to it. Long story short, you get a ten or fifteen-dollar parking ticket if you decide to get a ride home from a bar. And I just don't think that's right. I think that you should be able to make a good save choice, whether or not you made some poor ones earlier in the night. So, it's helping people make a good choice by still protecting business parking on weekdays and whatnot, but...
So they have to remember to move their car.
Or park to begin with.
Begin with, yeah, that's what I mean.
Right, and it'll be clearly labeled in painted lines.
Preferably you park to begin with, so you're not operating at the intersection.
You want a sign that says, "If you're going to drink too much, you can drive home, park your car here."
Or the person that comes to pick you up, they can move your car over for you, or something like that, sure.
So this is the map of First Street, the five-hundred block of First Street, and so you can see the white areas, right here, this areas would follow the same regulations of no parking from two AM to six AM. The areas shaded in orange, those would be the permitted overnight parking. It's good. This would be five-hundred block of Second Street.
Behind True Valley.
Behind True Valley and the bank, and so, you see part of that back row, up until probably the appliance store, would be overnight parking, the remainder would be the two AM to six AM, as well as the portion directly behind the buildings. It's a six-hundred block of First Street, basically between available bank and central Inc. offices. The stalls on the left, on the west, those would be overnight. The stalls on the right, those are reserved for the homeless apartments directly there, and so those already had regulations to begin with. Second Street, seven-hundred block, so this would be the garden, as well as behind the Second Street, 700 block, so this would be the, the garden, as well as behind the senior center. The main strip, right behind the buildings, again, that's a 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM parking regulation. The back row is going to be the overnight parking.
That's Peggle in the corner, right?
Right.
And this all, also ties into some changes done to Maranaki Salon?
Yeah, that was shown on that last one.
These are all gonna be posted though, aren't they, with signs?
Well, you're gonna actually...
Painted around, right? Ground to be marked and signs.
Except for in this parking lot, it's gonna be somewhere, because now all of it's paved, and so, it's just, some of these spots are gonna be just on the signage itself. Mostly the other paved parking lots is gonna be a combination of signage and the pavement markings.
Well, I appreciate the traffic committee's work on this. It's gonna be beneficial for everybody, and I, I, I hope it helps the salon as well. I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion approved. Item 5 on the agenda is the first reading of opposed ordinance, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Webster City, 1996, by amending Chapter 171, Title 5, Hotel Motel Tax.
As you know, a year ago, we put this on the ballot to be renewed, because it expires December 31st of this year. Fortunately, it did pass the first time, so our ordinance needs to be changed to reflect the changes of the wording that was on the ballot, as far as the dates and the use of the funds and how they're distributed. So probably, next meeting, we'll recommend, recommend that you waive, approve second reading, waive third, and pass and adopt, so it can be in place for January 1st.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion approved. There'll have to be some more training then for, for the next go-around for Hotel Motel Tax, won't there?
Yeah, they actually talked about that briefly, when they reviewed the initial application, so...
Item 6, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Rob's Tree Street and Stump Service, Restory City Isle, providing for 2017 and 2018 tree trimming and removal services.
This is for our, our routine maintenance of our, our tree line clearance. Required by the Iowa Utility Board to maintain the specific clearances from the power lines. We also do the service to be able to clear, at times, trees or debris, or stumps from the right-of-way. So, as the memo indicates, the Rob's Tree and Stump Service came in at $121,300. The budgeted amount for the current year was $250,000, so quite a bit of considerable savings, more than half of what we had budgeted, so...
Yeah, good to see. We like it when we save money. Okay, call for motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion approved.
Excuse me a second.
Yes.
Was there, uh, I didn't hear exactly all, all the conversation there, but was there a, a, an attempt to go with the local? Tree tremors there?
Yep.
It was bid out.
It was bid out, too.
It was bid out, so, okay, okay. Well, they had a chance, at least they, they can't complain about it, but...
No, no, they all, they all got a, got the bids, so...
Did you receive any from any of them, or they just didn't, they couldn't care?
Matt? Matt, we, we had that on the list, we, yeah, come on up.
We've received bids from them previously, but we did not this go-round.
I just was curious.
Previously, they've been higher than what we've actually went with as well, so...
Just curious.
Yeah, thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Item 7 is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a $1 million rural economic development loan agreement with Mary Ann Specialty Foods Incorporated.
This is just another formality based off of the conversation we had last meeting, and council approval, just to continue to move forward with Mary Ann's Specialty Foods. This one is more particular to the actual agreement between the city and, and Mary Ann's themselves. We've submitted and executed documents as they pertain between the city and USDA. Again, this is a pasture loan from the Rural Economic Development Loan Program from USDA that provides a pasture loan of a million dollars up to Mary Ann's for their expansion project out there, and so...
Okay. Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion approved. I can, I can tell you about it later, thank you.
Can't hardly hear Daniel, it's what I'm saying.
We'll have him, we'll have him lean forward a bit.
Yeah. Very good, thank you.
You guys hear any of that?
Yes, I do.
I'm just saying, I've heard that happen before.
I was trying to decide, I'm not very good at it.
You didn't grow up on the Prairie. Thank you.
Item 8 is a resolution authorizing enter into a purchase agreement with Civic Systems LLC, with Madison, Wisconsin, where Civic Systems connect software for life upgrades systems for the utility office.
This is, uh, this pertains to our, our accounting management software that the utility office uses for everything from our utilities to payroll, as well as other accounts receivables, and accounts payables that we do. I got, admittedly, I was probably one of the, as I read this, this memo and looked at this consideration, this is probably a month ago, and due to a number of questions that I personally had with, with trying to make sure that this was the appropriate move, because once you implement or adopt an accounting software system, it, it's, it's challenging to try to convert, convert otherwise, or revert back to something else. This would be an upgrade to our existing software, they're offering a discount for us to upgrade now. From what I understand, and obviously, it's a dramatic price difference between what the, what the price would be at $76,800, and offering a discount of $57,600 for a total cost to the city of $19,200. That is what we would pay for this upgrade over the course of the next three fiscal years, and, and at $6,400 increments. That raises a lot of questions, and obviously, right off the bat, it is, why, why such a dramatic increase, and what's some of the reasons why? From what I understand, is they're trying to move all the users to a single platform, to save costs on, on having different versions and different platforms out there, so moving to the, the single programming and software package, and then rolling future upgrades in a uniform fashion into the, the software support, the annual software support. And so, I did ask the question to our, our utility office and to DODI specifically, in terms of, is, are they fulfilling the need we, the need and the expectations that we had, and, and, you know, the response was a yes, and so... We also looked at what are some of the features they provide, what are the features we currently have, to make sure we're utilizing them efficiently and effectively, and so, you know, we are, and so, I felt comfortable continuing to move forward at the price provided. Having had experience and looking at, you know, other utility account management softwares, the conversion to a different system or a different software can be quite expensive, anywhere to, from, you know, roughly $100,000 or more, depending on what software package you go to. And so, again, this helps us manage all of our utilities, as well as our, our financial aspects tied to that.
Daniel, I have a question on that, if I may. One of the things I look at, because you talked about utilities and billing. Okay, I've been on the budget plan for several years, every month I get a notice from the city, you know, what my bill is. Then I get a return envelope and things of that nature. And is there any way this could segregate the people on the budget plan? So maybe we can get an email, you know, this is what our month will be for the month, and save that cost? I mean, is there any way that, I'm sure the computer people figure that.
If you go online, if, if you, if you go online and do the, the express bill pay and set up an account, you can choose a paperless option, and, and that will signal our, our software, but as far as what we have right now, I, we would have to just try to manually find your bill in the 2300 that go out and pull it.
Okay, well, no, then you've answered a question, I can't, that'd be a good article for you to write. Because you, you got all the answers on there, so, I think that's a great idea, that you volunteered to put that out.
Okay.
So, I, you know, I appreciate, you know, like I say, because we've been on the budget plan for so many years.
Sure.
And, you know, you sent it out, and that's the cost of doing it, you know, your time, plus the mailing cost and everything else. I mean, it's not amount large every month, but over a year's period, that's a lot of change.
Right.
So, you know, if you, that'd be a good city scene article for you.
To, to explain a little bit, I mean, well, DODI's referred to express bill pay and Civic Systems are two separate systems. Express bill pay handles our, our credit card processing side of things for the utility, which is a separate function that Civic System just doesn't provide, doesn't cover. That's the reason why we have the two separated, and so, if you go through the express bill pay system to pay with a credit card, or even just to pay online, it gives you that option of paperless billing.
But then they charge you for doing it, don't they?
Well, not, not for that, they're only gonna charge you if you use your debit or credit card. You can, you can go on Express just to have an account, just to look online and, and see your bill, and to do this paperless option. There would not be a, a charge to you for that.
Yeah, because I understood it was for the credit for debit card, but not.
Yeah, or an E-check, it is, it's, it's just because, it, it costs the city, all of those transactions, you know, the city pays for, so... You know, council just chose many, when we started this, to, to pass that on to the consumers, so... So the people that, you know, aren't using that feature, aren't paying for the ones that are, is why, is why we're charging.
Alright, thank you.
Can we perform?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion approved. Item number nine is a motion authorizing procedures on city, on city-owned property for asbestos removal and demolition for 1203 East Second Street, demolition for 1118 John Street, and 601 Woolsey Avenue.
This is a couple properties that the city's been working on, that had nuisance issues in the past. Obviously, the big one was 1203 Second Street, east of town.
Hotel.
The motel. The city just acquired possession of that not too long ago, from the property owner that relinquished any, any ownership of it. The John Street property, that was a property that was badly damaged in a fire, and we also just recently acquired it from the courts to be able to address the, the issues that are there. So the kind of the question, the overall question is trying to get guidance and direction from the council in terms of what direction you want us to head in, either at each property independently or collectively. We, but we group them together, so that as we move forward with both looking at demolition costs, cleanup costs, and in some ca, in one particular case, asbestos testing, we, you have a little bit more of economies of scale trying to group off really together to get a better price on demolition. And so, we can look at, and looking at each individually, and I know there's been some interest from people that perhaps wants to try to look at rehabbing some of these properties. The Woolsey property was one that the city was a nuisance issue, that the city acquired and then sold to a contractor contingent upon them rehabbing the property. They have since haven't met their, their conditions and the terms of the, of the agreements, and have relinquished the property back to the city. The 1203 East Second Street, that's commercially his own property that operates as an apartment complex. That's probably the most, we were in there on Friday afternoon, and it was a, a, it was quite bad. I'm trying to pull up the pictures.
You hadn't been in any?
Not in all the rooms. We went into each room and took pictures of each of the rooms to just to really look at the condition of the property and be able to report back, as well as move forward.
Is, is, the asbestos, is that only for, only for the commercial property, that'd be wrong? Because we don't have to do asbestos on housing, do we?
We have to do it, because it's city-owned, though.
Correct.
If it was privately owned, they don't have to.
If we take it on, then...
For us to sell it, we'd have to clear it.
Right.
But that's, that's the commercial property, yeah?
Just fix it up and run it off. I think you have to see the picture, or something.
Yeah.
Another clarification on that, too, in the memorandum, in the summary section, and this is just a law question, I think, just curious. Federal law requires asbestos testing and removal on four or more units. Why is the city like that?
So if it was an apartment complex less than four?
Oh, it's just, okay, because it's a four or more, I got you. I read that wrong, okay. I was like, why would, geez, why would it require you to knock down four of these?
I apologize, I didn't rotate all the pictures, so... Stretch your neck a little bit, so... Did that one upside down?
There we go.
There we go.
Yeah, and, and again, I, I remember a couple...
I needed a bridge.
A couple council meetings ago, some ideas were kicked around about not knocking it down, renovating it, but that kind of contradicts the whole purpose, we wanted to, to have control of it. We wanted to make sure it was the safety issue addressed, not the housing issue. Housing issue's a whole separate matter, and I think we can address that in many different ways. Where this is just a, 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 literally a rodent motel at this point. A lot of bad things can happen in this, not to mention the surrounding businesses have to be exposed to it. So I think, moving forward with knocking it down is not only responsible on our path for safety reasons, but just betters the, the environment on that side of town as well.
Can we just rent a van?
I would recommend not. No, the, 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 you can see by the pictures, there's a number of issues throughout all the, all the rooms.
Two by four here, a little...
Hey.
You know.
You have water damage, you, you have mold, you have, um...
Ostriches.
Does it seem feasible?
Curtains are in good shape there.
I think I saw this on Zillow.
So what do we, after, we need?
Well, I personally, I personally would like to group them together, just for the point you mentioned. Might have someone that's gonna, it's gonna save a few dollars in demolition, by having them have a contractor through.
There is someone interested in the Woolsey property and trying to rehab that. There, there, I think it's a single individual that has done one or two properties in town. But he's, he generally works by himself or one other person, and it just takes time for him to rehab it. So, like, on the Woolsey property, it's just a matter of timeframe, and whether or not the council wants to provide him that opportunity, as we did the previous person, to try to, to rehab the property, or, or whether, you know, we reached a point where we just want to move forward and clear these nuisance properties and these eyesores in the community, so that we can just kind of start with a clean slate on some of these lots.
Let me ask you this, it said, uh, staff has some reservations with permitting another contractor to attempt to rehab property, and failing to do so. We've tried it once and it's failed, right?
So it's sad, as is, from the outside for the last two years.
We took possession of that property in 2015, if that helps. And it was taken, I know you said nuisance, but it was actually taken as a drugs, no, it was a, it was a meth, there was meth lab, apparently, so it was taken as a forfeiture. The state took it through that process and then did it to the city.
What, I, I read that in your memo, and, and I agree, you know, I mean, to an extent that, you know, yes, we went down that path and then it worked for, but this being a different individual, would it make sense if we requested the, the demolition bids to be three or possibly two, and in the backend, we talk to that individual a little more, and see if it is something that he or she is, is capable, and financially and, and manpower-wise, to, to handle? I, I would, I would hate to, to judge one person's actions and, and that cloud any other opportunity that might be for someone else. Again, I, and maybe getting the bids back as a, as a two demolition, to a three demolition, it could sway the numbers quite a bit, or may not be worth as many contractors, it might get less. But in the meantime, maybe we can have some conversations with them, to see what that means to them and how that would work.
But I spoke to the, to the fellow that's, he's, he just finished finishing one in town that he's been doing this year. The one we're having problems with there on, what was that one that we, Cedar Street?
Down by Derrick, when you start?
Yeah. Cedar Street, the one we're having problems with last year?
Walnut.
Walnut Street, yeah.
So the one that was...
The one we had mowing problems, and dogs, and whatever, you got a tire from there.
Yes, in the north.
But anyway, he, he, he's been doing that one, and he's, he was interested in this one, and he, I mean, he does get it done.
Yeah, because that house is decent, at least outside.
But it is up to us whether we want to give him the time, because he will, he will take... But it is up to us whether we wanna give him the time, because he will, he will take, you know, it'll take him all next year probably to get it done, so.
I just wanna see if it's able to be a house again, and that's what I would like to see happen.
So that's why I propose that.
But I think, yeah, I think that's a good idea, if we get, if we got bids to do them all and, and then, you know. I guess if we, with, with perhaps, well, you know, what is it for two and what is it for three, I guess.
Yeah.
Uh, and then that would be just for the Woolsey property.
Because the other two are definitely, definitely, I see no sense in saving the other two at all.
We have to approve the asbestos testing first because that will affect the cost of the demolition.
And while you're approving the testing, why don't you just say an if necessary eradication too?
Uh, I think just because of the cost, I would be involved with asbestos, not knowing how much we might be dealing with. Um, it's a large footprint, so I mean, the asbestos remediation may be under five thousand, it may come in over twenty, which would still require council to be able to approve and move forward with that.
And, and there's separate, and there's separate entities too, there's testing entities and there's removal entities as well. To be clear, we cannot sell it unless we do the asbestos stuff.
But we don't, no, we don't have to remove the asbestos, do we, if we sell it?
Yeah.
Well.
Because we can't, can't we sell it, we could sell it to somebody and then, and then it's their responsibility or not?
That's what I'm asking, why are, if we're gonna sell it to somebody and it's gonna be on them, why are we?
We gotta have attorney for this.
That's a tough, that's a tough call. Let me preface, this was saying, I, if you want a legal opinion on it, I'll give you one. Uh, later I'll write, I'll write one for you, but currently it, it states that if a property that's more or more, like this one is, four units and has, and government owned, if we demolish it, the whole idea is once you start touching it, is when it gets exposed, uh, then it has to be removed in a, a safe state, state or whatnot. If it was a personally owned, uh, they don't, they, yeah, it's probably a good idea to get it removed properly, but, uh, you know, sometimes that's just spraying a garden hose on the, on the ground while you're doing it so that it keeps the dust down, so. Uh, I can't say though, off the top of my head, if, if we're required with selling, and I just know when we, when we talk about demolition, it's required, so.
And I think demolition is the path we're going down, so to back to your point, I think we should just move forward with the asbestos testing, no matter what we decide to do with it. But to Connie's point, I, I, I feel that at least the consensus is we knock it down as soon as we get this figured, but again, I would hate to write a blank check tonight, you know what I'm saying? And that's.
Okay, here. Instead of if it was private, you don't have to have asbestos test, right?
That, that's if a private person tears it down, I don't know if a government, the question is if they own it and sell it.
Private person owns it. So sell it to somebody of one of you guys for a buck.
Thing is, then we can't control if they're going to try to, right, somehow renovate.
Like you said last meeting, the week, because that's what irks me is we're spending money on something we're gonna get rid of anyway. But as long as we set our price, at least to cover these costs that we're throwing at it, we'll be okay.
Yeah, and, and when you go back to sell it, you're gonna have to sell it for fair market value, and so if the demo comes in lower than that, then your, your minimum is still gonna be higher than that threshold.
Yeah, that's a good point, like to look at what fair market value is and see if we're gonna be able to get out what we're putting into it for demo and stuff.
Right, I, I definitely wanna recoup my losses, but we, we definitely spend a lot more money on, on squashing other safety issues in the, in the community. So even if we come out a little bit in the red on this, uh, we're, we're taking away something that has not really bred anything good over the past few years. But again, I, I definitely don't wanna waste any taxpayer dollars money on this, and I definitely want the property to be affordable to whoever may wanna buy it and do something with it.
Two and a half acre is a perfectly good land.
Yeah, right on.
With the, with the shade on it.
City should keep it and put up a community center on it.
And we already have a community center out there, we have another one on complete, we have a couple already.
Where?
Ace?
Community centers?
Ace Senior Center.
Now, I'm talking a whole three, four hundred people at a time.
Briggs Woods.
We've already done, we've already tried one at Briggs Woods.
Alright.
We should have that one.
Alright, so what do we need to do here?
Just good motion to, to approve the asbestos.
So moved.
Getting bid on demolition, isn't it?
I'll second, if you take them, so moved.
All those in favor say aye. Both, same sign. Motion approved. Item D is reports, recommendations of officers, boards and commissions. Don't think we have any reports this much. Um, I guess, Zach, would you wanna?
Yeah.
A report on yours?
Apologize for my voice, I seem to have lost it, but, uh, things that went on in November, uh, big one we've already talked about tonight was this USDA loan. DODI, Daniel, myself, Carol, Lindsey Henderson, Nancy Nielsen, USDA, Pam at Mary Ann's. We've worked a long time on this one, so it's finally good to see this come to fruition. Um, so the plan is for the seventh this week, so Thursday this week, is to get this closed, hopefully, and get the money into their hands. We received the airboat letter of credit from the bank and all of that's passed USDA's muster as well, so we're good there. Um, in regards to lots, Brewer Creek's lots, our fifth and sixth edition, uh, we've now passed the covenants you guys have and made those uh, available to the public so they know if they buy a lot or that they have to follow the covenants. And then the big last one that we've talked about just now is abandoned properties. We've now received one, eleven eighteen John Street, which was the new one we received in the middle of November. Uh, and they actually did join a lot next to it, we came to find out they were actually owned by the same entity, one had a house and one had a vacant lot. Although the entity didn't work with us as far as cleaning it up, they were willing to give us a lot next to it, uh, so that we have two lots now available, once this gets tore down to eventually sell or whatnot on John Street in hopes of cleaning up that area a little bit. What going on with that, we have this last year, now that we're at the end of the year, uh, I can say we've, we've now filed on six properties for abandonment in order for the city to take possession of it, just in two thousand seventeen. Uh, in years, since I came on board in two thousand fifteen, we'd only previously filed two throughout that time span, so we've done a lot. Uh, Lisa's worked really hard on this as well. Uh, we are kind of been pushing a little harder lately on a lot of these, A, because of the council wants it done, and B, because currently it's in before the Supreme Court of the state of Iowa as to whether cities are gonna be allowed to continue to do this in the future, uh, whether it's considered illegal taking or not. Uh, so we wanna get it done before, hopefully get it done before the Supreme Court shuts it down, if they're going to. Kind of on the fence on whether they will or not there, so, uh, we've been working hard on that one, so any other questions and wanting to answer?
No, it's been, I think we've seen some good, good returns on your hard work, so.
And, and, yeah, and, and on top of that, not just abandoned side, but also unsafe and nuisance sides.
Yeah.
Uh, if you want an example, just drive down First Street, so you'll be surprised how much is getting excited and how much, how two new houses are going up on all the properties that we've dealt with, so. Thank you, Zach. Thank Lisa, she was. She was talking about that.
I think the team, that's what I'm saying.
I have one other question.
Yes.
You mentioned Brewer Creek five and six.
Yeah.
How many lots have been spoken for by now?
Uh, none on fifth and six, two on, or on three, right?
Yeah, I believe we sold two on the final two remaining, they were looking at six, then they realized that the, the three lots are, were, came back on the market for Brewer Creek three, so they jumped on those because of the cost for those.
That's a, you know, the three that were sold to.
Yeah, Dave Luke's and then we have another lot across from him, um, and then you have, uh.
And one of them, their house is being built on, will be built on, yeah.
Right. Um, and then we have multiple contractors who are just people interested coming in, they're looking and doing their due diligence on, on what they can do. We have contractors that are interested in building multiple homes and multiple lots, and so we're working through what they wanna do and, and, and what they can do, so.
So the answer is zero, but they're working on it.
None are sold yet.
The three from Third are sold or?
The three from.
Two of the, two of the, two of the three on Third are sold.
Two of the three.
Lot six on Third Edition is the only lot available still on Third Edition, if you wanted to.
Because it's bad and processed, so.
And you don't have as, as many covenants restrictions.
Okay, then Brewer Creek six, I was surprised to see there's a drainage ditch in the middle of it. Is that gonna remain an open ditch or are we gonna build some sort of a fence or cage over?
No, it's an open, it's an open ditch.
What does our insurance guy say about that kind of liability?
It's a green space.
He said, he said, don't walk out there.
Don't walk out there.
Don't drive your car out there.
Don't let the kids play over there.
Zach, for the record, the Supreme Court stayed rule on Eagle Grove and they reversed and remanded it.
They reversed, reversed and remanded it in favor of, uh, city Eagle Grove apparently. That was just today?
Uh, December first.
Just this last week. That's good.
So that's good for us.
Will call for motion again? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. We're done, thank you, everybody.